Public health professionals as we think about what that decision might be. But one of the key components of all that, if you think about that dark team, is really a careful analysis of the data. And we look at that very, very carefully. Not only from accounting perspective, from our Zippo perspective, but from school health perspective. So I wanted to know that, I want the community to know that we continue to evaluate that as an option. We're not there yet, but we are engaging a hundred and fifty five hundred professionals in helping us think about what that might be like. Or how that is.
So Mr. Forstof, continue to commit to the community that will be able to be noticed.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Powell. Okay, so moving on. Nothing's coming up, but hopefully. Mr. Lewis, I'm gonna need some help with that. There we go. So I thought it'd be helpful that if we brought back, I think it's always important to kind of go back to where we started from. As we did a lot of great work at open our schools and to really kind of think about what was the foundation for having kids in school and providing education. And that was our healthy back to school assumptions for the year. And the community has seen this frequently. I think it's always important that we kind of revisit that a little bit. So there are some key tenants in there that we never lose sight of. And first and foremost is that first one is whatever plan that we have, we need to be nimble, flexible, responsive. And certainly kind of the back end of that sentence, although not in bold, but is critically important is to help and safety all students staff. That's how we built this plan. And we will continue to revert to that if needed. We need to be able to adjust in various modes of instruction. We're doing that now, and I think we're doing it really, really well. I think you will see some results from our survey that really kind of calls that out. We certainly are watching all the health and safety guidelines that are in place and we continue to monitor those. So I just wanted the community to know that we continue not to lose sight of these assumptions as we think about what we're currently doing and what we're future planning for moving forward. Okay? So that being said, I think it would be helpful if we provided some information about the survey results that went out in the last couple of weeks, and we have the data for that. So I want to thank Ms. Bondbright, who was really the architect of this survey, and has done a great job of presenting it in a fashion that we can really kind of look at the results. So I'm assuming Ms. Bondbright, and I've asked her to kind of provide the details and walk the board through some of the results. So Ms. Bondbright, are you with us this morning?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah, thank you, we appreciate it.
Yeah.
When you need me to click through.
Okay. Well, just off, to start off, we were happy with the response. We had twenty eight, a little over twenty eight hundred total respondents. We asked parents to fill out one survey per student. So you can see, just looking at our current enrollment, that's a little more than half of our student population. But what I like to see is that the percentages were almost spot on. So we got a good representation of face to face and virtual, just based on those numbers. So I think it's a good sample size. Building breakdown and grade level, you can see that we had pretty consistently across the board, people filled this out. So it wasn't representative more of one building than another. It really was truly a district-wide look at the data. So Mr. Forstof, if you could move forward. First off, I'm going to show you the face-to-face results. This is in totality for K-12. Face-to-face, how well is your child adjusting to the safety and health protocols? Really happy to see that on the positive side of things, people feel like it's their child is doing really well with the masking and social distancing and hand washing, all the things that we're asking them to do. You can go ahead and advance forward. How safe does your child feel at school? Again, these were good responses. I'd say, I should have pointed out on the first slide, we had about seventeen, just shy of seventeen hundred face-to-face respondents. And in general, they do feel very safe and good about being at school with the protocols that we have put in place. You can go ahead and advance. Then we'd ask for a more specific breakdown of how you felt about our implementation of the following safety protocols. Mask wearing, social distancing. You could see the very satisfied category. You've got pretty high numbers there. School bus safety is a little lower, but that's simply because not everyone's riding the bus. So not everyone even answered that question. You can go ahead and move forward. Overall, how satisfied are you with your child's experience so far this school year? In the face-to-face model, almost seventy-eight percent said very satisfied. So we were really happy to see those results in the face-to-face families who responded. You can go ahead and move forward. So we, at the end of the survey, we had an open-ended question. What suggestions do you have for us? We had six hundred and seventy-seven suggestions, or responses, I should say. I went through and tried to categorize them. There were obviously some themes within that. The importance of mask wearing was really big. People just making sure that we are continuing to enforce our mask-wearing policies and that kids are wearing them. We also saw a lot of comments about the importance of maintaining that three to six feet social distancing. We probably had, I think it was a hundred and twenty comments regarding social distancing. People feeling like it's just really important that we continue to enforce that three to six feet and making sure that we're adhering to that rule across all of our buildings. Concerns about extracurriculars and athletics were brought up quite a bit. You know, just are we being as safe as we possibly can be by allowing those activities to continue? And I would say that the athletic department has done a phenomenal job of trying to ensure that our kids are being safe while they're playing in sports and athletics. Allowing students to use playground equipment was actually something that came up quite a bit with our K-4 families. They want kids to be able to use that equipment outside during recess. Reducing the numbers of students in quarantine was also a big theme. Whatever we can do to try to limit the number of kids that have to be out for fourteen days, of course, is something that's important for us as a district and that was reflected in our parents' comments as well. And then concerns about safety. Class sizes, if there's an influx of students returning to face-to-face for second semester. That was a big one with our face-to-face families, really imploring us to make sure that we're keeping the class sizes small so that we're able to space everyone out and keep things as safe as possible, because they feel like things have been going really well. That was the face-to-face results. Mr. Forstof, if you can advance forward, we'll take a look now at the virtual classroom results.
Yes, I will, Mallory. But before I do that, I think the themes that were evident in the responses as we've articulated here are not any different than what we hear. And I'm sure maybe you've heard some of these as well. So we're not surprised by these. These are affirm some of the things that we continue to look at and think about moving forward. So, all right, so let's do the virtual.
So virtually, that we asked the same question about the quality of instruction that your student has seen so far. These numbers were a little bit lower than our face-to-face, but still overall, on the positive side of things, I think that obviously people are pretty happy with their teachers and their instruction, even in the virtual setting, which is a good sign. It's a little different than normal years, so I wouldn't expect this to all be excellent. There've been some learning curves and adjustments that've had to be made for our virtual learners. The next slide shows you how well has your student adjusted to virtual classroom learning? Again, gosh, our kids are resilient, even in the virtual space. They're doing quite well. You see, again, a lot of a positive response to that as well, which is great. We'd like to see that. Our next slide is based on your knowledge, how much of a sense of belonging does your child feel at school? I can't say that I'm surprised to see the results were a little bit lower, with the most falling in the somewhat or some belonging category. We've heard a lot of parents and our staffs just talk about the need for more socialization and interactions with students to increase that sense of belonging and still feel like a part of their home school. So, and that was reflected also in the comments, which you'll see here in a minute. The next, we digged in to how satisfied are you with the following parts of virtual classroom learning? I think the, you see there the number two, interaction with other students, just what I was speaking about on the previous slide. We've got about twenty-two percent that say they're somewhat dissatisfied with that. And that's something that we can look into and see what we can do to tweak and improve going forward. It's hard when you have kids all at home, trying to figure out ways that they can interact safely with one another. Engagement with teachers is really high, which is great. Daily schedules, surprising to honestly see very satisfied, was at forty-eight percent with the daily schedules, because we have received some comments about wanting to tweak that. And, you know, there's folks across all parts of the spectrum on schedules, whether it should be completely rigid and similar to the face-to-face or a little bit looser with a little bit less screen time. Role of learning partner, I think that that again is a little bit lower, as well as class sizes. And we've heard a lot about the class sizes piece this semester, just making sure that we keep it small. The next questions we asked about with technology, how would you rate the following? We, you know, our help desk has just had so much put on them this year to respond and help support all of our virtual learners and staff. But very good, good, I think that's reflective of all the hard work that they've done through this semester so far. The instructional technology tools, again, everybody has an opinion of Google Meet versus Zoom versus Blackboard and all the things that we work with. So you see, that's a little bit lower as well. And then there's been some connectivity issues, which we've been working very hard to help resolve for our families who may have limited internet or Wi-Fi connectivity. And Mr. Fritz could talk a little bit about some of the things that we've been doing to try to address those issues for folks. Moving on to the next slide, this is the overall how satisfied or just satisfied are you with your experience so far? This is our virtual. So it's a, you know, it's a little bit lower on the very satisfied end, but overall, you can see the majority of our families feel very satisfied or somewhat satisfied with their experience in the virtual setting this year, which is, which is good. The next slide, again, we asked the open-ended question, what suggestions do you have for us? And we had five hundred and sixty responses. The themes that were huge on this one, reduce class sizes or keep class sizes small for second semester. Keeping teachers the same for second semester was also a huge theme that came out of this. They love their teachers, they love how things are going, their kids have connected with those teachers, and it's really important for them to keep and maintain those relationships for second semester, which is something we have to work around and figure out how to achieve that for folks. Requests for teachers for K-6 specials, we've heard this throughout the semester. Reducing screen time, adjustments to the daily schedules, again, all over the spectrum with that one. Some people want more, some people want less. The need for student interaction and socialization, again, was a big theme. Questions about switching to face-to-face for second semester, wanting to switch to face-to-face came up as a theme throughout the responses. And then just concerns about technology and protocol during class time. Not necessarily something I've heard just as a, at a district level, but I'm sure our teachers could probably speak a little bit more about that. But I, some of the protocol questions were like, why do students have to have their cameras off during class? Or do, can we have breakout rooms for lunch? Or there were, there are a lot of different like protocol questions about how we're doing virtual education, which was, you know, new for me, but I'm sure our teachers probably have heard that and addressed some of those issues. Then, moving on to the next slide, so that was it for, I'm sorry, that was it for the K-12's family satisfaction survey. Before I get into our staff surveys, was there any questions or anything you wanted to address with this?
I will say, I will say that these comments, again, are themed around and similar to what we do in the virtual town hall. So we continue to address, so it's consistent.
So Mr. Forstof, I think this is a great survey, and you got a lot of useful information out of it. But what's the next step? Where do you go from here with this data to make changes? How do you communicate that back to the parents before they have to make a decision for second semester? How virtual or face-to-face might look a little different based on the input of parents?
Yeah, so that's a good question, Mr. Powell. So one of the things that we are doing right now, what we've articulated to parents, is that when we ask, when we make some decisions around what second semester is going to look like, they need to know very clearly what the criteria is going to be moving forward. And we're beginning to piece that together so that before we ask a parent to make a decision about a potential change, they know what they're walking into. So some of this related to decisions around class size and keeping teachers the same, those are all things that are informing us moving forward. So yes, absolutely. But I think there's some current logistical things that we learned from the survey that could address us, like the protocol around technology, right? We're working with our teachers on some of the things that they're doing in an individual, like in a classroom-based virtually, to help navigate some of those things moving forward. And I think that goes to the level of support that we're offering to all of our staff, obviously with our virtual teachers, that we've got technology support to help them navigate some of the things that we're hearing.
Thank you.
Well, so Mallory, ready to do the staff?
Yes, we are. Okay. So the staff, and I, hang on one second. I realize I did not include some information that will be helpful for folks as we look through the staff survey. And that is the number of folks who responded to us. So we had, we did two separate surveys. One was for certified staff and one was for classified staff. The certified staff survey received three hundred and twenty-eight responses. And those responses, if you give me one second here. Again, very equally represented amongst our schools, which is great. And we had fifty-three percent of our face-to-face staff respond, eighteen percent of our virtual. And then we had a hybrid, which means that they're teaching both face-to-face and virtual. And that's really more at our seven through twelve level. And we had just shy of twenty-nine percent of those folks respond to this. So having said that, the first slide you see here, overall, how satisfied or dissatisfied are you with your experience? You can see that the, no one wants to go all the way to very satisfied, and I get it. It's not your normal school year. As a teacher, it's not, it's not ideal to have all the things that we've had to deal with this year. And gosh, we really appreciate everything that they're doing, because it has been tough. We know it's been tough.
I would echo that that is just reflective of the bar that our staff sets for themselves and for us. And that's a good thing. They want it all to be just right, because they care deeply about their professional practices, because they care deeply about what they're doing with their students.
Yeah.
And when it, because it is so different, and it's not exactly the way they want, I think it's reflected. I'll spin that a little bit as a positive reflection on our staff, which they absolutely deserve.
Agreed. But yeah, you'll see every, didn't matter what model they're in, they kind of all fell within that somewhat satisfied category. Moving forward. We asked, okay, gosh, my slides just got out of order, that's all it was. So this was a slide that should have come before the slide we just looked at. But there's your breakdown of our, who responded. You can go ahead and move forward. Okay, so how would you rate the quality of instruction that you have been able to provide so far this year? Again, I think, as Mr. Forstof said, our staff has high expectations and they want to be in the excellent range. But we do have, we had most people falling into the very good and good category across all three models of teaching. The next slide, just how well have you adjusted to the safe and safety and health protocols this school year? Pretty, pretty well there, you know, we got quite well, forty-four point nine percent. How safe do you feel at school was a little bit low. I mean, I think they both kind of fell in that very safe to somewhat safe or quite well to fairly well range. So I just, there's still, you know, there's still folks who have some concerns and we will do everything we can to address those things that will make them feel safer at school. And I think really just keeping up on the things that we've already put in place and making sure we're enforcing and maintaining those protocols is important for our staff to feel safe at school. Moving forward, again, we did the same thing with staff we did with families. We asked them how satisfied they were with the following safety protocols. You can see that mask-wearing satisfied, we've got, we've got pretty good numbers for, across the board, really, hand washing, temperature screening, limiting large gatherings. Even contact tracing was pretty high. Our, I think our lowest category really is that maintaining social distancing, which I just think are, we just got to keep on that and keep making sure that we're keeping our kids and our staff as far apart from each other as we can, given the current state of health conditions. The next slide is a little bit hard to look at a bit with all the numbers on that left-hand and right-hand chart, honestly. This is for virtual classroom folks. We asked them how satisfied they were with the same things that we asked our families. Screen time was probably where we saw the most dissatisfaction, with about thirty-three percent of our certified virtual staff saying that they were somewhat dissatisfied with that. Class sizes was another space, again, that our teachers did not feel, they felt somewhat dissatisfied about the size of our classes. But they were satisfied with the engagement with their students. It looks like they're very satisfied with the curriculum pacing that's going on, the daily schedules, which is great, too. Technology, again, same questions we asked, so technology support, the help desks, that sort of thing. The device that you're using and then the instructional tools that you are utilizing to teach, as well as that connectivity, internet, Wi-Fi issues. So I've got to say, I think some of this, and you can, I could see that reflective in the comments, were really around things that had happened earlier in the semester, and those things have been addressed. I mean, we continue to work through, obviously, troubleshooting things with technology. But, but a lot of the comments were, this was an issue at the beginning of the year, it has been fixed, we're thankful for that, kind of, kind of thing. The hybrid teachers, so again, these are our teachers who are in both models, mostly seven through twelve. We asked them how well they have adjusted to the health and safety protocols, as well as how safe they feel at school. Very similar results to what our face-to-face-only staff had said. They're in the same school, so I think they're feeling the same things. Moving forward, again, we asked them the same question, the virtual questions, about their satisfaction level with the following parts of virtual teaching. Again, happy with curriculum pacing, they're happy with their class sizes. Daily schedules looking pretty good. Engagement with students, again, I think that's something we, in interaction with others, I think that's another data point that shows us that we got, we need to work on ways to increase engagement. And how well you rate the following technology items? So our seven through twelve hybrid staff have been pretty happy with their technology support and tools that they're using.
Yeah, Mallory, can I just ask, just the whole concept of hybrid could be a couple of different things. It could be a teacher who is in, physically in a classroom, let's say at the high school, but has virtual and face-to-face students. And it could be a teacher who is at home and has virtual and face-to-face students as well, correct?
Correct, yep. We asked if you move forward, the same question, what suggestions do you have for us? We had a hundred and twenty-four open-ended responses. Themes here, concerns about enforcing social distancing, just making sure that we're staying on that. I think everybody, everyone across the board, not just in sycamores, experiencing pandemic fatigue. So we have to continue to make sure that we're enforcing social distancing. Transparency of contact tracing was an interesting one. We have done, done a lot to try to make sure that everyone is informed as quickly as possible when we have a positive case in the buildings and the close contacts that need to quarantine. I think that's reflective, and I don't mean to make an assumption, but I think it's a little reflective of just our current, like, state of affairs in the world. There's just a lack of trust that people are providing the correct data, and I can assure you that we are. Concerns about health and health conditions and going remote. So that really was reflective in later responses that came to the survey as the health conditions in the county and the community have changed. We had a lot of people who were concerned about that and whether or not we need to think about going remote at some point. Obviously, a big theme with our staff was mental health. Concerns about their mental health, the amount of stress and things that have been placed on them this year, they're exhausted. I did see quite a few comments about that. And then just concerns about their kids' mental health as well. They implored us to please keep class sizes small for second semester so that they're able to maintain our health and safety protocols, as well as provide excellent instruction, especially in the virtual setting. And accountability for virtual students, ensuring that we are making sure that they are engaging and participating and showing up for school every day. And how do we engage our virtual students? Again, that socialization and connection piece, that's really been difficult this year. How do we continue to foster relationships with our virtual students? The next, any questions there before I move into the classified staff? Okay. Mr. Forstof, if you want to jump ahead a slide and then I'll have to jump back, because somehow I got these totally out of whack. So we had a hundred and forty-six folks respond to our satisfaction survey. You can see, we've got a good breakdown of the buildings. Transportation showed up. Unfortunately, this is not maintenance staff's fault. This is our fault, somehow they did not receive the survey. And so we're going to follow back up with them to ensure that they have an opportunity to weigh in on this as well. So if you can flip back to the previous slide. So overall, how satisfied or dissatisfied are you with your experience so far? Happy to report our classified staff is very satisfied with their experience, which is a good thing. And gosh, these people have rocked it this year with all of the health and safety protocols. And how well self-safety feel at school? I think, again, these are very similar to what we saw with our face-to-face teachers and our hybrid teachers. It's about the same, everybody's kind of in the same boat there. If you want to move forward, two slides for me. So we also asked, what suggestions do you have for us? We've received forty-four open-ended responses. Again, concerns about making sure we continue to enforce that three to six-foot social distancing in all of our settings. Really, a theme that came out of our classified staff was encouraging students and staff to stay home when they are sick. They really drove that point home, that it was important that we're making sure that people are doing the right things in order for us not to have to shut down or quarantine or any of that. More communication, there was some requests for that, which we will certainly do, make sure that our classified staff knows exactly what's going on. And then again, mental health concerns for themselves. But, but gosh, I'll tell you what, they, there were quite a few comments about their concerns for the mental health of our staff, our teaching staff, which I thought was interesting, that they're thinking of those folks as they go through it. So that is all I have for survey results. Any questions or comments?
Just, just one additional comment from classified staff. You know, when, when they're looking for more communication, they always want to know what's going to happen if this happens. So I've been getting a lot of those questions, and, you know, it's really hard to predict, what are we going to do if this happens or if that happens? And Mr. Forstof and I have been aligned on the fact that we don't want to put information out there until we're certain or we're fairly certain that this is what's going to happen. And then we have to analyze. And then we have to analyze, okay, what are those next steps? But to sit there and pre-predict, well, if we close, this is what's going to happen. I think what you're hearing is the fear of, our classified staff are really pushed to stay open because they don't want to be laid off or furloughed or anything like that. So they keep asking me those questions and I keep telling them, as information becomes available, we are analyzing this information every week. You will, we will definitely communicate to you as soon as we know something. If there's anything to tell, right now, it's been pretty steady. Mr. Mercurio can attest, we look at it every week. We've been on a roller coaster a little bit, but there's no reason for me to put information out to staff when we don't know what's going to happen as a next step. So I think that's probably the biggest thing hanging out there because I know the rest of the supervisors are doing an incredible job of just continually keeping them up to date. Mrs. Von Bright puts out absolute detailed information. And one thing we did find is through discussions with our staff, they're not opening their email. And if you don't open the avenue that you receive the information, it's tough to get the information. So, but overall, we're going to have, our, our supervisors have already dug in for a plan to try to increase that communication.
And I'll, I'll just offer one comment. I appreciate this data and monitoring the pulse of our parents and our staff through this. I think those suggestions that were made by both parents and staff are things that can be readily addressable and help guide us for the second semester. So when you, when you go to do the plan together, bring a recommendation, I think, I think you got some good data there. So that's very good. Thank you.
Thank you for that. So to kind of conclude this part or this presentation, I'm kind of going to set the table for the considerations that we're thinking about as we look at second semester. And I know this is a critical element of our community interest and we want to honor that as best we can. We're really kind of thinking about this. Obviously, there's impact both at face-to-face, but at virtual, we're sensitive, very sensitive to both of those. But as we've looked at, beginning to put our plan together, we kind of looked at it from a, a three scenario aspect as it relates to what would happen physically in our buildings, right? And so, as you know, a key element of that is what capacity do we have within our buildings to increase the number of students that may potentially come back? So we're beginning to dig into, onto that data. So we kind of distilled this down to three kind of scenarios related to that capacity. And then what dictates capacity? Well, really, it's what we want to get to or maintain or change related to the distancing elements. It all revolves around that in our mind. So basically, there are three options to consider moving forward. Do we maintain our current face-to-face model with the approved healthy back-to-school plan which said we're within the three to six foot distancing, knowing that we, we really worked hard to get that above the three foot in many places in our district? Or do we think about it with bringing that distancing element back and bringing it to three feet, which allows us more capacity in our buildings? But there are, and I'm going to walk through some of the pros and cons of that to think about. Or do we go to a more larger distancing element at six feet? And that reduces our capacity to bring people back. So it's really contingent upon those three elements as we put our plan together. So.
That, that scenario would also reduce them, in some cases, reduce the number of current face-to-face cases.
Potentially. And there's other dominoes behind that, Mr. Alec, because it then could really, for lack of a better term, upset the current state of classics in many of our buildings, right? Because we've set those at a certain distancing grade. If we increase that distance, then we may have to look at a major overall of what our classes look like. So let's walk through that a little bit as we can. So.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Forstofel? Given the fact that we have zero cases from the students that we have quarantined in our current three to six spacing, what's the driver for evaluating option three? You, you can't be better than zero spread within the schools. So what's the motivation for looking at that greater than six foot?
Go ahead. I have an answer for that, but go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I was just going to say, if you do that, I mean, if, if you're going by CDC guidelines, I think it, it impacts how many students would actually be quarantined if you have a positive case. If that would do it in ten, I mean, if you have more than, if you have six foot distancing, always.
The motivation is to reduce the number of students that would need to quarantine.
If you have a positive case.
Exactly. And, and, and basically, I mean, we'll get through that when we get the pros and cons. But basically, we wanted to just present all three of the options and look at the pros and cons. I think you'll see that, and I'm not going to, I'm not going to drive what I think right now, but I think you will see when we get to the six foot, you know, there's some significant challenge with us doing that.
And the second part of my question is, I'm also a little confused about the difference between one and two. Three to six feet would, to me, include the three feet. We're probably currently maybe not at three feet, perhaps a little higher on average. On average, the three to six feet, to me, would allow a three-foot option as needed. Am I mistaken on that?
No, you're not mistaken. But I think even though we approved the three to six, I think what we heard is from the board clearly, we needed to do everything we could to get above three feet.
The highest that we could.
Yeah, the highest that we could. And we've done that in many circumstances.
Okay.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, Mr. Forstofel, these are all the considerations based on choice, you know, of the community. Are there any other considerations that you get aided by? You know, we watched the town shift towards purple, we were looking at our internal data that allowed us to maintain what we were doing. But if we had to shift something, I don't know, we had talked about, you know, if we had to go full remote, there was a certain plan for that. I don't know if any of the existing data over the last semester might have changed some of those other alternate considerations too, that were scenarios that we had to keep in our back pocket just in case.
Yeah, you know, Mr. Evans, I, you know, I, I think your question is, is I'll go back to how we started being nimble with this, and, and we are prepared that if we had to go full remote, you know, we've got a certain, we've got an instructional plan in place for our teachers. We've got curriculum lined up for our teachers, that if we had to flip and go to full remote, whether that be, you know, based on what the health data says at a current point in time or if it's more long range, we are prepared to do that. But right now, and I'm, we're always looking at that. But right now, the major focus in terms, and, and the reason we're, I'm more comfortable with that is because we've been looking at that for months. But right now, we've got to sit, because we've got parents that are interested in knowing, where are they going to have a chance?
Right. This is a choice side of that.
Based on what we're currently doing now, right? So that's kind of why we put these three criteria in place. Okay?
Yeah. I just wanted to make sure one other thing the board would have to consider.
Yep. Yep. Okay, so then let's kind of walk through each of these and just kind of put some high-level pros and cons. So let's say for a moment that one of the options that we're going to consider would maintain the current face-to-face model, Mr. Comfort, with that three to six. That's what we're doing now, okay? And let's say we wanted to maintain that to the best of our ability. The pros of that, first of all, it's our approved plan. It's what we, we agreed upon this summer. We know that routine's important. It allows us to maintain some consistency for students in terms of how they adjust in the classroom, in terms of health protocol, not only for students, but staff and families. But also a pro that if we do not have a major shift back, and when I mean that, from virtual to face-to-face, the likelihood is higher that, that students would, would maintain their same teachers. There's the likelihood that that could be, be an element of that. On the con of that, and I'll go to that third bullet. If we had a major interest in coming back from virtual to face-to-face, we do have some limited capacity within our classrooms, currently the way they're set up at that three to six, okay? So that might cause to have, we may have to think about students not being able to be in their home elementary school if they come back to the face-to-face, based on the capacity of what their home school is, and do they want to come back? We're confident that if, that if we were able to maintain these distancing within our, within our classrooms and we could handle the number of people coming back, that our quarantines would ma- maintain relatively about the same level. That's a hard one to absolutely predict, as we've seen most recently. But we don't see a major shift either way in that with the quarantine. So those are some just kind of some high-level pros and cons if we maintain a three to six. But I think the caveat in that is the number of students coming back into face-to-face. That could change that a little bit in terms of, of, of what the impact might be in, in our classrooms with staffing and your classes. Okay? All right. Then the next one is, if we walked it back and we said, okay, we've got our, we've got our distancing in our classrooms at above three feet in most cases, approaching four and sometimes five and sometimes six. If we said, okay, but we want to bring that back to three feet, certainly the obvious one is you could have sent more students back into the face-to-face. That's an obvious thing. Okay? The likelihood that a student in an elementary could not come back to their, their own elementary school? Lessons, right? Because you have more space, because you could increase the number of students, okay? The downside to that is, you know, we're going to have more students physically in those classrooms, right? You, you saw from the survey, that is a significant wonder, worry, concern, not only of, of parents, but of staff as well, in terms of bringing more students if they're closer together in our classroom. I see that as a con. Okay? You know, we've been minimal in-school transmission. If they're closer together, the, the likelihood that we're going to have in-school transmissions could increase. Which, you know, and then it kind of gets into the whole quarantine thing. You could get, the likelihood that will increase the number of quarantines is most likely high. And then finally, we've got some transportation issues that we would have to kind of sort through a little bit. And then if we had a drastic shift back, there's, there's a chance that students would not get their same teacher coming back. So, you know, that's an element that we need to consider as well. So three feet, more students can come back, but there are some dominos behind that that we need to consider very carefully. Okay? And then if we went on the opposite end of the continuum and we wanted the, the ideal in terms of the social distancing, here, you know, obviously, if we got six feet and above, we would have less quarantine. And I know that's an issue. I know that's a concern of the community and our staff and our students, and I completely understand that. We would have less of that. However, if we went to that, if you reduce the number of students that you could bring back, you know, based on the, the distances, we would really have to look at flex spaces in our buildings. We would have to leverage all of the flex spaces, including some of those that could be gyms, theaters, some of those things that are not traditional classroom spaces. You would have to leverage as classroom spaces. And then the backflow of that is, okay, if you're using gyms and theaters for classrooms, what happens to the programming that's in those, those current spaces? There could, there would be an impact of there. You'd have limited classroom, limited building capacity, you just simply would. And then do we need to look for additional space outside of their home school? What we heard from the town hall and from the survey data is that if, if parents and kids want to come back, they want to come back to their home school, it's on four. That may be a challenge for us. And, and certainly, you know, if, if you expand and have to, if you limit the number of students in our current classrooms that have to leverage flex spaces, you've got to create additional classes, right? Which means students may have to move around. You know, we may have to take a class, create another one, and pull students from different classes. That's a challenge, okay? And then that could significantly in the, uh, impact courses. And then underneath all of that, if you're creating more classrooms in, in flex spaces, you're going to need more staff to do that. The board's been very gracious about doing that. So we, we, we didn't want to overload the cons, but obviously, we did overload the cons on this one. But we were just trying to be transparent with our thinking about what are, what are the realistic points and considerations on increasing the distancing to six feet from a health perspective? Yes, absolutely. We can all agree with that. But there are other things behind that that we need to consider carefully.
Hey. Can I just ask a question? Sure. The additional staffing.
Yeah.
I was increasing the space at our, and I'm just thinking we've already increased staffing for remote, remote teachings. I assume that would just transfer to the additional classrooms or spaces. You'd have to put on some move somewhere.
Yeah, maybe not. And let me, let me try and give that data into a, an example, okay? So let's say you've got a class of about, let's say, 20 in a classroom at four feet. You then, when I increase that to six, you can't keep 20 kids in that class, right? So you want to leverage them and put them into an, an alternative space, flex space, right? Let's go back to the same teacher thing. Let's say you have to take six out of that 20. You, you may have to, and, and that might not be the only classroom impact. There may be another classroom. So you're really kind of potentially pulling from multiple classes to create another class. Those teachers in those other classes that you pulled from still have to stay there. But now you need a teacher for the other one, right? Does that help?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. It, it's, it's, it's a complex matrix, but a domino that we all, I think we all need to consider. Okay? All right. And then, obviously, I'll come back to how I started, okay? We're working hard. We know we need to be responsive to our community. We need to be flexible and we've got health things. I just want to, I always want to end with how I began and remember that we've got some pretty key assumptions here that we want to kind of hang our hat on as we think about what we're going to do with this plan. And then finally, here are some kind of big dates, okay? There's probably a number of, of other markers between now and then. But our intent would be is we would bring a recommendation back to the board at the November 18th Board of Education meeting. We would then, following pending board approval, put out a communication to the community about talks about what the, what the criteria is going to be, what it's going to look like, so parents can then weigh in from there. That allows us then, between that date, one, to get, get the information back, but also remember February 1 is the opening of our, our second semester. So that seems like a long time. But there's a lot of work that would need to happen between that date and when we open up second semester. So I don't want, I don't want people to see that big gap in there and think you've got plenty of time. Well, there's sufficient time, but there's a lot of work that needs to happen internally with us. Okay?
I want to think some of that.
Yeah, we do. We do. We've got a great team working on it. I'm very proud of the team. We work on it every day and continue to get the information that we need. We're getting close. We've got some things that are starting to crystallize a little bit. We're not ready to release it yet because we want to make sure we get it right. That's what this community expects and deserves. We're careful to, although I did share some cons and pros of this, we're careful with hypotheticals. I don't want to get to a final hypothetical, if you know what I mean. I want to thoroughly vet the plan to the best of our ability before we roll it out. Okay?
Yeah, I would just comment that, you know, you, you've said it, but we need to emphasize that the parents will have all the information on what that's going to look like and what, how that would be different in second semester than it is first semester, so that they can make a decision to stay where they are or to change and be very transparent on what that's going to look like.
Yep, that is my, you're right.
And, and we're still, though, under the guiding principle that, that the parents will have a choice, right? They want a choice which model to choose for second semester?
We're going to work through that. One of the issues that we have to think about is, is our ability from a capacity standpoint. Yes.
But follow-up on the capacity, the numbers we received at the last meeting?
Yeah.
Were they based on the three-foot model?
Were, they, they were not. They were based on the three to six. We have additional data that's coming in that we'll share with you that goes back to the three foot.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because when I think of three to six, I, and capacity maxims, I think of three. Understanding the, the, so it's helpful to understand that the data we saw last time was perhaps not pushed to the three-foot limit.
It was not. But we've, we've got, we're, we're getting, we've got the data that goes back to the three foot.
Okay.
Okay. And we'll share that. Okay? Okay. Thank you for your feedback. Appreciate it. Okay. We ready for the next one?
I'm ready.
Yep.
Yeah.
All right, let's look at it. All right, let's look at some buildings. Again, great work on behalf of our partners from S H P and the design teams at the buildings, the community design team, Mr. Lewis and his team, as we kept the design of our projects at the forefront of what we're doing, in the middle of everything else that we're doing. So it's what we'd like to do today is share with you some updates on the junior high interior design based on some feedback and give a little, a lot more information about the high school interior and external exterior design. So, Mr. Lewis, anything in addition to that?
No, Charlie and his team are ready to go.
So Charlie, are you with us?
Great. Yes, hi, good morning, everyone. Thank you for allowing us to present today. I like to say I have an all-star team presenting with me. Carrie Malatesta, she's our interior design director. Jenny Gallus, she's in interior design, leading two of the buildings. Jordan Hibner is on one of the buildings you'll see today. Kenzie Harmon and Mackenzie Goyard are also going to share some info. So, without further ado, we'll jump in. And I will hand it off basically to Jenny to intro the junior high. But what we're going to see is junior high, high school, and then we're going to do some high school exterior because there's a new entry. And then I'll jump back on and I'll review the high school exterior sports components. So Jenny, it's all you, next slide.
Great.
Just letting you know when you need me to flip the slide, okay?
Okay, great, go ahead and flip. So, quick reminder, I think you saw this slide last time, but we wanted to remind you that we have established some kind of overarching design concepts that you're going to see used both at the junior high school and the high school, both inside and outside. And that's really taking inspiration from flight patterns in using aviation and some of the kind of graphic, literal and abstract themes that we can pull from. Next slide. So, the junior high, obviously, last month, we met with you all and gave you kind of a sneak peek at some initial design concepts. And we wanted to get back in front of you. We've continued to work on the junior high and it's really evolved and transformed a bit from last time. We've had a lot of conversations with Mr. Lewis and Dr. Ray. And we also had a community design team meeting where we got really good feedback from the community wanting us to take another pass at some of the concepts, simplify the design a bit, and again, look to create continuity between the designs of all the buildings by again establishing and reinforcing kind of that aviation theme in a graphic form that could span all of the buildings, not just be unique one to the other. Next slide. Floor plan, again, I just want to remind you of something because some, the concept has actually changed. If you look at our academic community, which is that clover leaf shape, one of the revisions we've made is to actually use color to start to provide an identity and serve as a wayfinding element in that pod community. So similar to at the green school where we have different colors for each team, in the high school where they were starting to use color to define departments, we're now using color to define each of these kind of leaves of the clover shape to provide some interest and again, a wayfinding mechanism for your students. Next slide. Our lower level, again, same concept what you will see here. Next slide. So our color palette has evolved a bit from last time. Again, if you remember, we talked a lot about maintaining neutrals in the flooring and the laminates, and those have not changed. What has changed is the color story. So you're going to see that we have a fairly bold sycamore green and gold that's used throughout kind of the athletic and public spaces. And then we've softened the palette a bit for the rest of the building, knowing where the students are going to be. We've added some additional colors. You're seeing that those four, the quadrant of four colors on the right side, those are what is being used to define those department or building pod areas. So again, the color story has evolved here a bit. Next slide. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Jordan to walk you through the updates that we've made, and then I'll take back over to show you some new spaces.
All right, good morning, everyone. So this would be the main entry upon arriving to the building, if you're a guest or a student through the admin suite. So here, we've really simplified the graphics on the two-story wall to really relate to the flight pattern theme that we are using throughout the district. We are heavy on brand colors because this is a public area. And we are also starting to introduce some of those pod colors that you see in the airplanes. And again, the flooring relates back to those aerial views you might see from an airplane. Next slide. Here's the media center, again, reinforcing the flight pattern theme. And as we're getting closer to these academic pods, we're starting to introduce more of those colors for the different departments, again, through the airplane motifs. And again, incorporating the brand school colors as well. Next slide. Here is the entry to the academic areas. We wanted to simplify this with some school spirit, incorporating the We Are Aves logo that will then draw you into the academic pods. Next slide. And here, we've taken the science blocks and lighten them up with a toned down gold color to then really highlight these academic pod colors that you will see in the next few slides. Next slide. So here we have each of the four extended learning area areas represented with the flight pattern graphic that spans the two-story wall that you will be able to see from the upper level as well. And also incorporating a splash of color that you will again see from both the upper level and lower level. We are keeping the furniture, school brand colors to really reinforce the brand. Next slide. And here's just a bigger blob of each of the ELAs. Next slide. Next slide. And one more.
So last time, we brought you images of the two gymnasium spaces, and those have not really changed since last time. I think we continue to get good feedback on them. What we didn't show you is the entry experience that your students will have when they're coming off the bus and that visitors will have when they are coming to an event at the facility. So this is if you were to come in, the event doors on the lower level, we are looking to kind of pull you in two directions. So we wanted to have something of graphic interest on the lower level, which is leading your students towards the locker rooms and how they will access the gymnasium spaces. So you're starting to see an Aves logo beyond. And then we were wanting to pull the public upstairs. When the public is going to an event in the auditorium or one of the gymnasiums, they will go up the staircase and access it from the upper level. So you can start to see that we're using the flight pattern graphic to pull people up the stairs as a wayfinding mechanism. Next slide. So this is again on the lower level, looking back towards the lobby, giving you a preview of again what the students would experience as they're going to the locker rooms. You can also start to see that we're using the flooring to start to create kind of a doormat outside of entry points to again serve as kind of a wayfinding device so people know when they're getting to a doorway that they might have interest in. Next slide. So upstairs, if you were going to the theater or going to a sporting event, this is again, if you came up that stair and turned around to see the graphic on the wall. We are looking to brand the entry to the auditorium with a green block. And then you're seeing yellow to the left. Next slide. And you see that that gold is starting to be kind of a showcase area. What we are proposing, those white blocks would be art or poster holders. So again, this could be kind of a gallery space when the public is gathering before or after an event. You can see that the ceiling is starting to relate to the wall pad concept of the gyms. And we're keeping it neutral outside the auditorium, but you can start to see color down the athletic hallway. Next slide. This hallway space, again, you can start to see that we're using those doormats again to mark the entrances to the two gymnasiums. And here, using the gold on the auxiliary gym entry. And then beyond, you can see the green at the main gym entry and starting to introduce color into the ceiling baffles to again pull the public down this hallway space. Next slide. This is standing outside the main gym entry, again, looking back towards the staircase. You can see that green theater block in the distance. And again, you can see that we're starting to look at adding display cases and some other ways to activate this hallway here. Next slide. And again, the two gymnasiums haven't changed, but hopefully, seeing that hallway space, you can start to see how the design concepts are kind of unifying each other, that the wall pad design shape here relates to the baffles down the main hallway space, et cetera. So I think we're just really starting to create a cohesive design for the facility. Next slide. And again, our main gym, since last time, the concepts have not changed. We are still working on the paints. And I will say that on Friday, we're actually meeting with some folks in person to again look at the green and gold school paints to make sure we're heading in the right direction with those. I know that was a discussion point last time. So know that that's still ongoing and we're working to get those colors to show up right in the computer.
I would also say that in the next couple of weeks, Charlie and members of his team will be interacting with our student groups at the high school and the junior high as well, as they've been involved, my advisory council groups throughout this process, so we want to honor them and get some feedback from them as well.
Yeah. So that's where we are with the junior high. We welcome any questions or feedback now, otherwise, we will keep rolling into the high school.
I've got, well, two questions. Let's start with one on the access to the theater and the gyms. Were there, are there elevators for folks?
Yes. Yes, there's, in this view, the elevator is right behind you.
Okay. And then my second question probably applies mostly to the newer buildings. The security team, I know we have a security team for the district. Have they been through and walked through all the designs and been able to kind of give their opinions on different aspects?
Yeah, Charlie, you want to weigh in on that? I know that was a key element for this process.
So, we've had a couple of very focused security meetings where we've brought in first responders for the particular buildings. We've brought in our door hardware consultants, our technology consultants who control, design cameras and access control. So this has been an ongoing discussion throughout the past few months. And as we head towards the final quarter or so of getting the documents wrapped up in December, we will continue dialogue with those folks. But then the principals have seen it, the assistant principals, all with a security hat.
We've had all of our first responders from the municipalities that, especially like at the junior high, that was a really detailed meeting with the city of Montgomery weighing in on access and pathways and just things that they have to be able to do to get their service vehicles in and around the building. And they, you know, what they're concerned about is being able to get to any door and any access at any time. So, you know, there's been a lot of collaboration between the different groups throughout the design process.
And it's in the interior as well.
Correct, yeah. We've been able to do it with a 3D model where we can actually walk them through. We've looked at sightlines, we've looked at barriers, we've looked at containment. So we have a large list of best practices that we apply to all new school buildings and renovations to make sure it's the safest it can be.
Thanks. Yeah, I would just add my comments. I think the updated designs to the junior high look great. I think it's come a long way and look forward to seeing it move along.
I like the designs as well. I do have an accessibility question. When I see the pods with the colors for wayfinding, for me, two of the colors seem strikingly similar. And I just want to make sure from a colorblind group of students, have we done a review of that? If you look at, there's two kind of a blue to me that are strikingly similar. And it may not be for everyone, but I just wanted to check if we have done that analysis.
Yes, and actually, the color, the pod colors, I think, are one of the items we're wanting to get actual samples in front of the team for. The color, they're reading closer to each other on the computer screen than they do in person. But I will say, your comment is something we've talked about internally too. So I think we're still fine tuning them to get these two pods as, you know, different as possible without having to bring in like hot pink or something. So I think we'll continue to fine tune those colors, and that's a great comment.
And just because, I mean, they're both blue, so if you say blue, like, yeah.
Great.
Questions? All right.
Great, thank you so much.
Okay, so we will move on to the high school and Carrie and her team will take us through there. And then I will be the one explaining the exterior components. So Carrie, jump in.
I will actually take the reins from Carrie.
Kenzie will, okay.
Yes. So thank you again. Over the last couple of months since we last met discussing the high school, we have definitely continued to develop this further. I think we're taking kind of the full, the full holistic approach as we're looking at all of the buildings in this district. And those have kind of progressed this even further to know that this is the last in the progression of the buildings. And we wanted it to be that elevated and more sophisticated approach to these flight patterns and all of those concepts invested. So if you go to the next slide, just as a refresher, because this is a large building, kind of the main shifts that you'll start to see in some of the 3D spaces today are that the main admin block in the light green and the music suite in the orange have flip-flop spaces. So the main entry being on that east side now with more of a secondary athletic entry being that north entrance. And we'll start to show some 3D images of that today with all of the, if you go to the next slide, please, with all of kind of the main thoroughfares and connectivity happening in these spaces kind of centered around the hub in the green, the green on this slide, as well as student dining in the light purple with kind of our academic pods surrounded, surrounding those spaces. If you go to the next slide. Most of our finishes for this building have largely remained the same. I think what you'll start to see is the implementation of some of those has changed a bit. But again, we are trying to keep mostly district colors in the public facing spaces. Today, you'll see this implemented in the reception as well as the main corridors and student dining. And then once we start to get into the hub and more of the academic spaces, we're trying to add in some of those orange tones, the bluish gray tones to just to add to that elevated and sophisticated feel. If you go to the next slide. So the first space we'll look at is the reception. As you've maybe seen some other images, it's the different buildings in the district. This is a space that we are trying to unify across all of the buildings to really provide that district welcome approach as students are entering. So what you will see in some of the other buildings is this back yellow wall that has some 3D, has some dimensional lettering with the name of the building. And in this space in particular, we are working with some existing column grids. So what we've actually used for advantage with that is building out this green box that you're seeing a monitor on towards that back desk. There are many people that are working in this main reception space. And that desk in particular is where we want to draw all visitors in. I mean, that's where they'll check in and that will kind of be their first entrance into the space. So wanting to accent that a little bit with the green. If you go to the next slide, I will turn this over to Mackenzie and she will kind of walk you through the rest of these spaces and some of the updates of both the spaces we've shown before, as well as some of these additional spaces.
Now everyone can hear me, right? So as Kenzie mentioned, and Jenny, that you saw throughout the junior high, we have taken the same concept of flight patterns in this diagonal striped format and implemented that here at the high school so that this became an elevated but still connected environment. So we're moving, excuse me, moving into the main corridor, which is this door to the left is what you would enter in. excuse me, moving into the main corridor, which is um this door to the left is what you would enter in um after entering this cure vestibule and checking in. Um, and so on the left wall here, we've implemented a gradient from yellow to green to really pull the visitor, student, staff down that main corridor, um, then implementing a little bit of branding on this side as well. And so then if you go to the next slide. On the right side, um, we have implemented this gray striping line that goes the length of the corridor and started to um, provide places for those really important elements that you want to bring from the existing space to this renovated space. So things like distinguished alumni and the legacy tree will be able to play be placed here and framed out. Um, so they're in an important entry point um for visibility by all. And then also we're looking at here, this new entry to the hanger, which is the spirit shop. We've put some um branding vinyl graphic on here. And then once this space gets filled with merchandise um and different items, it will um be given a lot more color. And so another um element that we've added to this space is um to identify our athletics department. We have colored or painted all of the columns green. So anything surrounding that athletics department is going to be signified by a green column. Next slide. So moving further down that corridor, we're looking at student dining. Um, so we have implemented a new railing here that is this idea of layering over the existing um concrete that is there, something that's durable and long lasting for you, but also is going to be sleek and um timeless. So we've created this idea of a datum around the student dining here and in the hub, which will you will see in a few images. So that datum continues on to the brick wall. Um, with the use of wall pads. And so anything um protruding that datum, be it below or above, will be in green or yellow. We have chosen to treat that main display wall as completely neutral so that the main feature is the display and not the the um striping. And so that we've maintained a variety of seating here, but still are able to meet the seating counts that the high school needs. And you can see to the right, we are still identifying that athletics department with those green columns. Next slide. And so now we're sitting down at one of those booths on the lower level and looking back at where we were just standing. So that gradient wall that you saw in the main corridor image um ends with the deep sycamore green that wraps this wall. And then sort of creates a break into this neutral striping with the main yellow stripe spanning both um floors. So we would call that a two-story stripe. Um, so this yellow, uh, this yellow striping occurs in both student dining and the hub to kind of further signify um different spaces that are occurring here. And then we wanted to use this yellow stripe and pull it on to the railings that we could further connect these two spaces and you could see this idea of layering. Next slide. Then the Aves Express Cafe, we did show this last time, um, just a few changes here. We've brought the floor and the ceiling out to encapsulate all the furniture um in this area. Um, so that just further helps to identify um, kind of what this space is and that some, there's another a different function occurring here. And then we've also changed the lighting a bit. Next slide. And so then this department entry you have seen before, but it has changed. Um, so we've i- implemented a new um look to our signage, new design to our signage. Um, so now we've taken that perforated metal that is occurring on the railing um in the student dining and the hub and brought that to our signage, which wraps the corner nicely, allowing visibility from the corridor and the hub in this instance, and also into these um entrances into the academ academic areas. And then we've also placed some neutral striping into each academic area with the yellow plain to um bring in some branding for this, some school branding, but also a little bit more um color and interest to these entries. Next slide. And so now you're looking at another extended learning area or collabor collaboration area set up similarly, but just a little bit different to provide some variety. Again, with the neutral striping and yellow plain, um, we chose yellow because we are maintaining that yellow in the hub, the student dining and here to create a very cohesive look. And then we've also changed the lighting in the collaboration areas to be these recessed liners, which just provide a lot more cleaner um feel to these spaces. Next slide. And so this being the hub, um, we have refined this large two-story added structure. So the glazing has become um a little more light feeling by um because we've changed the color to a lighter a gray versus the dark that we showed last time and then eliminated some vertical mullions and made sure that that middle darker piece span of spandrel glass aligns with something. Um, so we're finding it to be two, these two um half circle elements are starting to feel complementary of one another versus competing with the other. And we have maintain maintained that central um circulation path through this space. Next slide. Um, so looking back, you can see that that yellow stripe, as I said, occurs here and in student dining and we did bring it off those back walls and on to the railing here um so that you can get this idea of layering, but also connecting um both circulation path and this hub space together. Um, and then we are utilizing the colors of the departments um uh as either side of the yellow striping to further um be a detection of wayfinding. And then we've also added a little bit more green um into the furniture here. Next slide.
Can I ask a question on that last slide?
Sure.
The blue, what what are the blue panels? There's like four blue panels.
Those are, those are felt panels and um right now they're being implemented as a means to divide space. So the ones to the left of the screen are really to identify that circulation path and provide a little bit of um acoustical pri- acoustical and visual privacy to uh what may be happening behind there, whether it be collaboration. Um, and really just kind of guide people along that central circulation path.
Okay, thank you.
And I have a question too on that page. Um, I know there's a lot of uh uh walkways around the edge of this space that's used today to move uh kids back and forth to different classes. Um, and that that lane is kind of gone. Is that is that worrisome at all as far as kids circulating down and trying to get to the back classes? I guess there's math behind there getting across versus going right through the middle of this area?
Um, I think our our um idea for utilizing this central circulation path was so that the hub would be utilized not only during um instruction, but also during class transition. Um, so that we would really create this idea of connectivity and um interaction in this space. So it was de- definitely our design intent to provide a little bit more um use in this space by adding that circulation path.
And I'll just chime in, Mr. Evans, that that where you see in that image of the orange and yellow stripe, there still is that corridor back there. So we've maintained that corridor that you were referring to. It's just the walls around the current hub are coming down. And you can see how there'll be just a lot more activity throughout.
Are you talking about going through?
Well, it was separated before, so I think you'd have an area that, you know, people could just kind of maintain and do something with when there was circulation. It wouldn't cut right through the middle of that.
Well, what, uh, part of our observations is that the fact that there are walls all around the hub, the the former media center is that it, the use of it is quite low. I mean, that that space is is really large. I believe it's six to seven thousand square feet. And by opening it up, we think we'll be able to create a whole new a- area of collaboration and gathering and circulation um through through that zone.
I I have a a similarly related question about traffic flow. Uh, one of my observations is that the stairwells are super congested on um change of class at the high school. And it looks like to me that the stairwells are left intact with the same design. Um, I wonder if there had been any consideration to widening the amount of traffic that could go up and down between the floors because those are absolutely pinch points for our students right now.
Yeah, uh, we we did explore a larger, a large grand stair uh kind of through this space. Um, but we we have not uh pursued that because of the initial cost estimates were quite high. Um, and so right now, I think one of the things we need to look at is just um the overall, the other circulation points and what we're doing in the other stairs. Um, w- we we do realize that, and I, you know, I was a student of this building. It was a a a log jam there, but um I think po- potentially having more space around the hub will allow a lot of that scattering to occur rather than kind of the the funnel um mousetraps that were there before.
Okay, and 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 consideration for additional this points stairs that could go up and down, has that been looked at as well?
Yeah, additional stairs are not warranted right now based off the 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 load. Um, the students, 2000 student load actually does not require more stairs. There's um, but we can we can look at it and see if if, you know, expanding those are are, it's a tricky exercise. So um, let let us talk with with Mr. Mater and and some of the leaders there and see if see if that, you know, potentially help some of the traffic flow items.
And and this picture allows a a second question I have because I I had a question on this slide as well as the one with the cafeteria. There are a lot of movable pieces in here and then there's some fixed pieces in here. It looked like in the cafeteria, maybe the booths were fixed. Um, we will go back to that slide, like the the right in the forefront, are those fixed or movable? And the reason I ask is these spaces are used for a lot of different types of events where, you know, with the after prom or the homecoming or the odd couples dance where traditionally things are moved around. And I'm just curious if we have put fixed design elements in that we might have to consider uh for the future.
Um, no, so we have discussed that with Mr. Lewis and Mr. Mater that this space is utilized, this and the hub space is utilized for many different um things other than dining. So these um booths that you're looking at in the foreground and then those in the background of this image are going to be mobile furniture pieces and easily um kind of um stacked and moved out of the way. In the last, the image before this, I will say that um we envisioned the booths along this main feature or display wall to be um fixed, but the tables and chairs that are up to it can be moved along with the bar stools that are along that wall. But yes, everything else will be able to be mobile.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Um, so this last image is what is your um existing entry, but will now uh after a post renovation become your athletics entry? Um, so we have again kept that same language with the green columns and then added a little bit of athletic branding here with the Aves and the Rocket on the wall. And then this yellow stripe um you'll see is maintained throughout the athletics campus that Charlie will show um a little bit later. And so we brought that stripe inside to um kind of keep that same design language. And then we do have provided two opportunities for display cases. Um, to be sure that the students of Sycamore and their victories in in an athletic sense are able to be displayed. And I believe I'm going to hand it over to Charlie unless there are other questions about the interior.
Okay, so um, this is one of the first times we debuted the um modified exterior for uh Sycamore High School. So as you know, we are flipping the entry to the east side. Um, we will be introducing a secured vestibule um and a a larger stair. So it's kind of a formal stair that that welcomes visitors. And then to the right is a an ADA compliant ramp. You also see to the right and the left, two separate drop offs. We know there's a large amount of car traffic and there we've worked with our civil engineer to have um basically two drop offs, one coming from one side of the the district, the other one coming from the other side of the district. Depending on which which driveway you enter. Um, we want to take the flight patterns um and 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 share that on the exterior. So you can see uh to the left, a very large Sycamore High School um graphic that announces where you are. Uh, you can see the diagonals uh through the window. That's a film that would be applied on the window. And then you also see the canopy, which has kind of a the the same type of angular uh form. Uh, that form itself also matches with the junior high and the green school. So that language is kind of cohesive through the the various buildings. The glass box is there today and what we would be doing is applying the Aves logo. So we know Sycamore kind of has the the Sycamore High Community Schools academic logo, we'll call that. It's district wide. And then we have the Aves logo, which is more sports based. And so that's why it's to the right, which is where the sports functions are. It's it's some more subtle wayfinding. Next slide. This is another view that this is coming from the the other drop off. Um, again, a a very prominent entry. Uh, and we've heard for years through all the surveying and all the the inquiries we've done, people say, where, how do you get into Sycamore High School? It's a pinch point. We don't, we can't find it. Um, and so by having this l- large entry now, folks, when they come off of Cornell, they will know exactly where to go. They will know exactly where to enter. And as I mentioned, you see the front doors there. That is a secure vestibule. Once you're in there, you'll be uh, the only point, when school's starting, it was it's similar to how it's today where you walk into the office. Next slide.
Oh, Charlie, can I ask a question on that?
Yeah.
So to the left, is that still to the left of the um little evergreen bushes in the front? Is that the entrance to go down into the first level?
Yes, it is. And so when students are entering, students can enter that way uh and and also for large gatherings or where people need to go down to the commons, you can still enter there, yes.
Okay.
Yep. So the next slide is just a night shot. Uh, again, we want to make this be uh very prominent, uh lit up. Uh, where the 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 goal is to have some of the strength glow. Um, so you can see some transparency through this image, um where you can see inside the building, you can see the 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 bright green and gold that that uh transfer through the the glass. Um, so we're excited to share that that image. That's the first um time we've we've really revealed this publicly and um we've we we again have worked very closely with the the leaders of the school to make sure that this uh accomplishes a lot of goals as far as security, ADA access, traffic, uh, getting kids in safely and out safely on a day-to-day basis. So with that, any any questions on the interior exterior scope for the high school?
Not a question, but I I just want to say I love the design of the exterior. It looks great.
Looks great here. It looks good. Thanks.
All right. So another exciting thing to share with the board today is the exterior sports scope. Um, this is something that um has been going on for a a while, um, just because of the nature of the pandemic. It did slow down, but we have picked it up uh since September. And I I understand fundraising is is occurring um concurrently. And so it's 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 time to share the this vision and to to continue to move forward with this next step. So next slide.
I just want to make the comment though, that this is still contingent on the two and a half million dollars that we committed to the community to raise uh before moving forward with any of this.
Correct.
For the state.
For the state.
Correct.
Thank you.
Next slide. So um th- there's a great opportunity for um the athletics complex to really reimagine what what's been done there. A a lot of the components as far as baseball and softball and the other fields have been there for a while. Um, they they need some repair and and also if you really look closely at the uh, I believe it's the softball field, it has a really, really, the current softball field has a really short outfield right against the highway. So we started to look at uh locating the stadium. We had the stadium close to Cornell and it made the most sense really, if we want to make this be an athletic campus, to move the the new stadium closer to the soccer field and tennis courts. They're there today. So with that, we would, we will have to move baseball and softball, but it gives them a a great opportunity to 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 have better sized fields and be in a better location. Uh, we're also using the themes of aviation. Uh, so you will see some angular forms that kind of wing shapes and ascending that we're trying to celebrate with the Aves logo, um, sky is the limits type concept. Um, and then the other concept which which Mackenzie mentioned is we're using kind of a band of gold around a lot of the athletics components. So we're trying to do that on the interior and also do that, use that concept on the exterior. And then that green can be complemented by the natural green colors of the grass fields that are out there. and also do that, use that concept on the exterior, and then that green can be complemented by the natural green colors of the grass fields that are out there. Next slide. So this is an aerial, um, to the top here, where the tree line is, that is the two seventy-five. The little gray bar to the bottom, that is Cornell Road, and then to the right where the, you can see soccer practice fields, that's where we're current practice fields are. So we've got the stadium kind of carved in, uh, tight to the existing tennis courts. Um, the reason why we've chosen that location again is to to create a really nice athletic campus where uh, we know that events from soccer and and the football, or the new stadium, I won't call this football stadium, because it will also have lacrosse and field hockey. It can can co-share some of the the facilities as far as concessions and restrooms. You will also see a a proposed fieldhouse that's kind of in the middle. Uh, we're trying to make this fieldhouse be an area where it's home locker rooms, but also it's the press box uh, for softball and for ba- uh, baseball. Next slide. So here is uh, standing kind of on a a new entry level of of a fieldhouse. Uh, this this scope here has um, varsity amenities for that season, so there is a, there is a varsity locker room. Uh, there's a training room, uh, there's a um, a team room, some coaches' offices, and then storage, and actually referees, uh, locker room, so they have their separate place uh, to change. We know that this is still, this is in fundraising mode for this component, uh, but we wanted to make sure that 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 the architectural language that we have as far as aviation, flight, ascending roof forms in that yellow color, you can see it here. This is kind of looking back, um, you can see just a little tiny bit of the Gregory Center picking out on the top left hand corner. You can see the the stadium in the background, uh, you've got the a new baseball stadium in the foreground and softball uh, closer to the highway and the tree line. Uh, we want to make sure that the lights that that the stadium has are are closer to the highway, that there's, you know, that's that's really other reasons why we have the stadium as far into the site as possible, so we're not down on Cornell near some of the residences. Um, and then you can see the grandstands as far as seating for the the new stadium. Next slide. So here is, here is the stadium, um, it would be a turf field. Uh, it looks a little different for us, because we're used to seeing a track around it, and um, we have the track over on the soccer field, so there is no need to put a track here. Uh, we've talked about striping this for field sports, as far as football, soccer for just practices or other events, and then field hockey and lacrosse can also use this this turf area. Uh, we also have seating for fif- uh, four thousand seats, so there's twenty-five hundred on the home side, there's a thousand on the visitor's side, and then you can see to the to the south there is a student stand, I believe it's where we're exploring five hundred to seven hundred student seats, also banned, could also reside in that that location. Slide. Uh, this is the the backside of it, and so what we want to do is we want to build in restrooms and concessions and tickets within the home side, uh, so that becomes kind of the gateway in into the to the stadium. Um, and then we are just doing a little bit of a wrap on the a press box. Uh, what you are seeing is a two-story press box that we have explored with Mr. Harden, uh, we don't know if if that will remain, because just offshoots and access that need to be provided for that, but we wanted to just see, see the size of and what it will be. The other thing you 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 can see is the sponsor opportunity, where there are some some large areas where we know that sponsors would be interested in in partnering with Sycamore. Was there a question, or was that? I heard, okay. We'll go to the next slide, I I believe Mr. Forsthoff will start the video, so if you want to hit play.
Oh, boy. Glad I got a backup.
And I know we, another version we have has audio on here, but we're not getting it, which is okay. Uh, but you can see the the parking lot, because we're uh displacing student parking for busing, so there's, this is a new additional parking. Um, here is the the fieldhouse and kind of what that represents, and as as far as one end of the the stadium. Um, as I said, this is, this is basically varsity based scope, um, so if it's fall sports or or the spring sports, actually even even winter can use it. Um, here is looking through the baseball field. I'm sorry, that was softball. And then we would still maintain some of the practice fields, because I know that that Sycamore utilizes those on a regular basis for younger kids and also camps throughout the summer, so a lot of that would be maintained, and that's that's Cornell right there. Uh, next slide is kind of um a deeper dive into stadium, there is a visitor press, uh, concession stand and locker room right there at that end. Uh, Mr. Harden wants to make sure that the visitors kind of live in their zone. Uh, this view here is coming, students would come from um, the the fieldhouse, and then this is looking on the home side. And so you can see it's a great opportunity to have a a renewed image for Sycamore Sports. The the lighting we would look at would be LED lighting, we would look at the uh, up to date technology uh, scoreboards, um, kind of maybe see them when we spin around here, and then you can see the large plaza gathering area to the right. Scoreboard that probably ticks out right to the left right now, so there's a scoreboard right there in that corner of the stadium. And then this is kind of a final shot. So with that, uh, Mr. Lewis or Mr. Forstoffel, do you want to put any more information on the stadium scope that I present today?
No, I I I I'll just reiterate what Mr. Balance said, you know, obviously the contingent upon the two point five million dollars we make so to get there. Mr. Lewis, anything?
No, I just, that obviously, when you go through a design, uh, you put in a lot of things that you may not be able to afford, so. You know, I think it's great that SHP tries to bring Mr. Harden's dreams to reality, and I hope we can fundraise for every every piece of it, but at the end of the day, our commitment is, you know, we obviously need to move a stadium to the high school, and it needs to have the basic amenities, and that's going to be the focus. If if we fundraise and we can provide additional things to our student athletes, I'm all for it, you know? Double decker press boxes and larger fieldhouses and things like that are great, but again, it's got to fit into the budget, and it's got to fit into the overall package, so. I know Mr. Harden and I are meeting with Mr. Janigan upcoming to just talk about budget and really hone in what we need, what are the immediate needs, what are the things we have to do? Um, so, you know, we'll keep you updated as that design develops, and this is the typical process, believe me. It happened at the buildings as well, the buildings' expectations were, you know, we wanted the Harvard of of the Ohio area right here in Sycamore, and it's like, okay, we got to temper those expectations a little bit to what fits in the budget, so. They're they're doing a nice job, and Mr. Harden so totally understands, he he redid a facility uh, in his last district, so, you know, the only thing he didn't have to deal with was a turf field. Um, so we do have to deal with that, but, you know, we we're working hard to get that honed in, and, you know, we'll keep you up to date as we um, bring that design to fruition, and hopefully in a future meeting, we can tell you that the fundraising component is finished, and here's how we're going to proceed, and here's when we're breaking ground.
Miss, I should ask you a question, based on a five million dollar budget, assuming it will hit that number. We see today, it would fall outside of that, you mentioned, you know, the double decker.
The double decker press box, and I would say uh, we're honing in on whether or not a fieldhouse is a part of that, because, you know, Mr. Janigan and his team do a nice job of giving us conservative estimates.
The rest of the layout, the parking lots, the uh, the way the athletic fields are moving all around, that's all within the, that I mean.
I would believe that's all within it, and that included, you know, when Mr. Janigan and I looked at it, that was also including moving the baseball and softball field, so. We have to, we have to account for that component as well, so that's why I said it's it's trickier than just saying, hey, we have five million for a stadium. It's not as clean and simple as we have five million for a stadium, because if we had that, then you'd have a separate budget for baseball and softball, we don't currently have that right now, so.
And I I I see this plan as a sports master plan, that's really what this is, this is the total vision. And the the one thing about sports is you can, you can chunk chunk that off as as the budget supports, so. Um, so we are working very closely with with Mr. Harden and Mr. Lewis to make sure that um, all all items are are covered and configured.
We really would have liked to have that opportunity, to have that fundraiser on April third. Had COVID not hit, I think we'd be talking a lot differently about this design, so, you know, our hope is that someday we can go back to that plan, because we think it's a good plan, and obviously, you know, later in the agenda, we're going to take some action on a next step towards that fundraising, so.
You know, I just wanted to say, I think it looks really sharp, it looks super nice. Um, but I do think that maybe one consideration as this develops is that we do a internal investigation within our community. Um, you know, baseball, softball, and football, and what those trends are, participation rates over time with our youth. Because you want to make sure that what you're supplying is meeting the demand of what people are doing. Because I think the sports themselves have different trends going on at the youth levels, and we're dedicating a lot of real estate here for sports that may be declining in participation in this community. And being a little bit closer to that, connected to that, I think when I start thinking about the next twenty years, I'm wondering, in a master sports plan, if this is kind of, you know, looking at what people are doing and what they're going to be doing later on. If that makes sense.
My reaction to that is, um, in the two fields, other than the multi-large stadium or or varsity, baseball and softball, right, Jen? Varsity softball and baseball.
Yeah, I mean, essentially, we're going down in the number of practice baseball and softball facilities that we currently have, is it looks like in the master plan, we're and really our focus with the baseball and softball has, we're still focused on trying to figure out how to place turf on that facility, because then it opens it up, instead of just being a single use or a very limited use function for the spring season, it opens it up to be the outfield being usable for soccer, lacrosse, those types of things, so. But I I definitely appreciate that commentary, because
You want to build in the flexibility, because you may get to a place where you find out, you know, we we have these really nice facilities, and they're not being used. If those are three practice football fields, I, you know, I just don't know that that's kind of coming to be what it is, I, you know, at the younger grades.
You mean the ones way out?
Yes.
Yeah, those signify, those signify any field sport, so it could be lacrosse, it could be soccer.
Okay, again, I was just guided by that opening paragraph that you put in the presentation, so.
Just, just to clarify.
Go ahead, Brett, yeah.
Sorry, I just had a clarified question, the two larger fields are the baseball and JV baseball, I'm assuming, and the two smaller fields are the softball and JV softball?
Correct, there are four, there would be four ball fields for those, yeah, but the this this, the second largest ball field, baseball field is for is varsity softball.
Right.
Yeah.
Ones with the Aves on it.
Yeah, the the varsity softball, varsity softball, varsity baseball get really good fields, and then the GAV kind of get the secondary fields.
Okay, so the two smaller fields are the JV fields, is what you're saying? That's a lot larger than our current softball field is, by the way.
Yeah, the current one, though, if you look on an aerial, is is really sandwiched on the highway, it's it's it is the funny, one of the funnier outfield I've ever seen. So it, we're we're kind of improving upon the current outfield situation.
Yeah, and to tie Mr. Commerfer's comment, when I was kind of commenting on, you know, the required parking lot space for this complex is taking a significant chunk of that space out out of commission just for parking, and then expansion of these fields being bigger. But it's just just want to make sure that the balance of like, what community and students will eventually be doing. That's just a
It's a good point, because, you know, last month, when we were in here, we were talking about, you know, um, reducing soccer, baseball, and a couple of other sports at the junior high level. Um, and that seemed to be a trend based on getting enough kids to play those sports. And and I know we kind of reverse to change that, but I think to John's point, you know, it works under a lot of trends, and maybe we're a little misunderstanding that as we go through this investment profile.
And we are showing the baseball and softball at at the junior high uh, right now, uh, within that site, so.
No, my point is, Charlie, it's just the discussion we had about, you know, the junior high wanting to eliminate some sports. Yet we're putting in facility, facilities in for those sports, you know, and and I don't know if we ever asked the question of the data to look to John's point, and, you know, what's the trend coming up through those other grades, sixth and below?
Certainly, that's a conversation we have to have, and then I think the other thing we got to remember is we're also community facilities, so, you know.
I think that's what John meant.
And I agree, we we have community.
So I'm saying, because the trends in the in the sports of soccer and lacrosse are looking the exact opposite of baseball and football. That's right, at the youth level, and we're building a a beautiful baseball and football complex.
Yeah, one of the concepts that that Mr. Harden's talked about, and Chad was mentioning, is is to actually have baseball and softball, the 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 new one with removable fences. So they can be used for baseball and softball, February, March, April, May, and then on the other off month, they they could be restriked, and it could be a field sport, so.
But maybe the consideration is it's a shared space.
Correct, yeah.
I think you just want to know the numbers of what the participation levels are, so you don't, ten years down the road, you don't you know, look silly with a bunch of baseball fields that may not be getting used.
Well, and then we'll, we can definitely help to explore that. And I I spoke wrong, and the current field that is kind of funky is the Sycamore High School baseball field, if you look, if you look at the aerial of that center field is probably closer to home plate than right field and left field, so. You if you can pop a pop a ball in the center field, it's probably a homerun, so.
One other question, John, have we impacted the memorial that's out there?
We know that that's a very critical thing, we've got it identified on our survey, and if uh, if if we can work around it, we will, if we have to relocate it, it might, it might need to get moved, it's being explored, we we definitely know about that, Mr. Robbins.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Steve, thank you very much, good work.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, Forstoffel.
Thank you, going from pandemic to facilities to strategic planning, I don't know whatever that is, but that's the order we got, so. There you go, and beyond. Right, so let's take a a little bit of time with the board and and to kind of update a little bit of the strategic planning process. And just kind of a a walk a little bit down memory lane. As you remember, we had worked pretty extensively for some months uh, to get the plan in a really good place, and then obviously with the shutdown in March, we had to push pause on a lot of different things. Rightfully, so, um, and it got got to the point where we were about ninety percent go point of implementation for a strategic plan, and important certainly maybe the most seminal document that this district needs over the next five to seven years, so we want to make sure that we never lost sight of it, but also re-energize it, make sure we get it in a good place. So we've met periodically throughout the summer with the strategic planning team um, and looked at where we're at and where we need to go, um, and and then obviously what changes um, need to be made um, in order to get this plan in a fully functioning place. Uh, but that's kind of what we're going to talk a little bit uh, today. Um, certainly as we look forward to any kind of plan, and I know it's incredibly important, not only to the board, to the community, that whatever plan we kind of place, um, there are measures of progress embedded, and there's a plan to make sure we get those in place, right there yet. Uh, that's part of that remaining ten percent, I would say, uh, that we do, so. You know, we want to kind of re-energize and re-get the board in a in a place that that brings to the front of their brain a little bit, and and make sure that they have a, you have a clear understanding of where we're moving forward, what are the next steps with this plan, but also provide an update on what's a broader But also provide an update on what's a broader update on what's been completed. So, Mr. Here, obviously, way in here as you've been such a critical member of that strategic planning team. So, you know, here's some just some fundamental bullets, you know, there there could be many others. Obviously, you see references in there about a vision and roadmap with goals and measures for our path ahead. We're always talking about alignment. We want to make sure we're hitting our goals. We want to make sure that our leaders are all, our leaders and our staff are committed to this plan. So we're thinking very carefully about that. And then certainly moving forward, we want to make sure that in order to make sure that this plan is being implemented, we've got the best talent available to make sure that we can engage this plan. So so there certainly may be other things that we want to reference in there, but those are some key elements of why you even go through a strategic planning process. So next, you guys are aware of this. I mean, we just, you know, this this kind of speaks a little bit about the excellence. There could be seven slides on this. But again, not resting on our laurels, but building on the great work that we already do and making sure we get better. And that's kind of been our message moving forward. So let's talk a little bit about the planning process. I will share with you, there were three elements, research, development, and then certainly implementation and action. Those time elements in the green bar fluctuate a little bit based on, you know, kind of the weirdness that we're in right now. I will share with you, you know, underneath research. The Board of Education really needs to be under the internal analysis type of layer, somebody more internal than you guys are. And that's just an error on our part. But what I would share with you is that we did a lot of work, and the board's aware of this, in terms of focus groups with parents and students. My advisory groups were involved, and staff and the board and administrators to pull all the relevant data around to help us inform that plan. And we took a lot of our, we took that data and really formed strategic themes, mission and vision and values. And are beginning to refine the three-year objectives and annual goals moving forward. That's that last piece I just referenced is a lot of the the heavy work that needs to be done right now, okay? And then moving forward, and it's September 2020, moving forward, and I'll give you a little bit more detail about timeline around that. Ultimately, at some point, we're going to need the Board of Education, we're not there yet, to sign off and approve this plan. We'll then begin to think about how we look at our strategic themes and put teams in place to really dig into the details of formulating our strategies around those. We're going to touch point with the community. And then certainly, as what we think we do really well is make sure our communities communicate with what this plan really means for the future of this district. So again, on the green, a little bit of a waiver in terms of the timing, I'll clarify that a little bit at the end. So again, this is just kind of a a little bit of a more detail of some of the research that we did, and you'll see reference there. Again, the board should be up above in the internal analysis. But we did a lot of focus groups, you know, with staff, administrators, students, parents. We did multiple sessions on that. We did some organizational analysis. We did some SWOT analysis. So you can see a lot of things throughout there that we did to try and inform our our planning moving forward, to to build this plan to the best shape we can. So then, you know, we got all that data. We started then to finalize some strategic themes. We built a vision. We built a mission. We built core values, which I'll share and get your input on. And now we're in the process of crafting and really refining three-year objectives, looking at indicators and looking at one-year goals. As I said, that last bullet there will be a lot of the heavy work that we're going to do and bring that back to the board at some point. Because you guys certainly need to make sure you're comfortable with it. So then, with any strategic plan, you need the broader statements that really dictate what you're going to hang your hat on every single day. So that involves a vision, a mission and values. And this was drafted based on some of the data. This is certainly open for feedback from the Board of Education. Because at some point, element that'll be folded into board policy and board communications and things like that. So you have to make sure you're comfortable with it. But in terms of a vision, you know, some key elements that I noticed in there is full potential. I've heard that from this board repeatedly over my course, my tenure here, and I know that's important to you. You know, we talk about getting our students to be prepared to step out into a globally competitive world. And, you know, at the end of it, we want to empower our students. We do a lot of empowerment here. So I think power, potential, competitiveness hopefully is is a grand vision for that. So I'll pause on that one. Any initial reactions to that? You certainly can provide feedback later, but any reactions to it? Does it resonate?
Yeah, it resonates with me. I think it gets most of the key points that we that we could have been talking about.
Okay.
I like the vision.
Yeah, and I would just add that the strategic plans, a lot of time, the board gave feedback before on the specific vision that we had. And then kind of build everything in, and we wanted to simplify it, make it really clear and understandable, so that's what.
And also, yeah, I also think repeatable, you know, when you can.
It's the elevator.
Exactly. If you can say this and you can remember this, then you have a picture.
Yeah, I think the time we're in, we need to look at more of those really powerful kinds of quick statements that we can go to. So I like it, but again, I'll give you a few.
One thing I say in vision statements is they're usually sort of aspirational as far as this is what we want to be in the future. And some of this, at least in the statement, to me, sounds like where we are today or what we're trying to do today. So I was kind of missing the what's different about tomorrow than what we're doing today. And I think as I read this, I would say, you know, we're doing most of this. We're trying to, it doesn't seem different than. I don't see the gap of what we're trying to get to based on the vision statement. And maybe that's okay, but that would have been, that was my initial reaction to kind of reading to it. Most of the vision statements are just seem to be kind of aspirational, okay, we're good today, we want to be great tomorrow, or something like that. I wouldn't hold up this discussion right now, but that's just my initial reaction to.
Yeah, no, that's a fair point. I, you know, the mission speaks the way it certainly does speak to aspiration. I guess my only reaction, just as a thought would be is, you know, when we think about aspiration for our students, where do we want them to be? Where do we want them to be competitive, right? Once they leave all the doors. And I don't know if that helps you, Chris, but I think that's our core mission, right? What we want to continue to do. Underneath that, there's a lot of things we need to get better at, obviously, but just the thoughts.
And I would just say, I think, I hear what you're saying. What I needed to add, I think it's also kind of built into that, where is an aspiration? Maybe there's, maybe you have a suggestion, minor teacher or something, I'm just that.
I meant I don't, it was just a reaction to it, okay, no. Hold on. I also appreciate your point, Mr. Robbins, but I may have to ask you the opposite way. Do you think all learners are reaching their full potential today?
Which is, that's where I think.
That's where I think it's aspirational, yeah.
All right, well, we can sit on it for a little bit too.
Again, kind of re-engaging your mind around this, right, which is a perfect. Mission. Certainly, it's, obviously, we've been strategic on where we place academic excellence. Certainly very important. We are an inclusive district and work really hard every single day to be more inclusive. We consider ourselves incredibly innovative and continue to look at innovative ways to engage our students so they can reach their full potential. And I like the close of it, to be honest with you. We are about the whole child, right? We start with the academic excellence, we end with the whole child.
I'm coming on the mission too. I think, you know, as I get the mission statements and defining them, it's usually a standard objective that you're trying to achieve. But then a mission statement or a goal, and in the past, like you said, to be a nationally recognized district. Our mission is to be, John said, destination district. I'm trying to, as I read a mission statement, you know, was that objective measure that, you know, we're trying to take on a scale? We're trying to, you know, there's usually some objective or some challenge that the mission of the organization's to rise, rise up to. Some of this here kind of led into a vision statement. And I know in the past, when I spread, you know, nationally recognized district, the destination district, some of those I could see as objectives that you could measure against. I had a little bit of a challenge trying to measure against this one of, hey, are we succeeding in our mission? Are we on a path towards whatever that mission might be?
Yeah, I think that's their comment. I I will say, as this starts to roll out, you will hear destination district built into the goals. And that's been ongoing through through all of the strategic plan. Yeah, maybe, maybe there's a way to incorporate something like that.
And these are just my first reactions of.
Yeah, 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 get it in front of you, think about it. We're open to suggestions around it moving forward as we frame this towards the finish line, so.
And I would say, Frank, that this is an important time for your feedback.
Yep.
Because we're starting to build, I think, we're going to start bringing the strategic plan more frequently in smaller pieces. Bring this along, but these are going to build on each other. So the feedback, you know, if you have issues or you want, you have suggestions, that's the topic. But maybe not like right now, but, you know, start thinking about it today.
What I do like about this mission is it starts with academic excellence as the first, but then it gets to the how. And but I think that academic excellence being up front is important.
And then values. Initial reactions. We vow, I mean, if you really thought about it, like the word we, we value. It's kind of how I look at it.
And the point that I may mention about destination district, that's falling under that community. It develops into a theme.
And then, this is where, you know, obviously, vision, mission, values are incredibly important because they're the pillars on which you build a plan. These are underneath each of these strategic themes will actually be the work that will be going on. And so obviously, you've seen that we've crafted around A's, which is great, academic achievement, community partnerships, excellence in operation, actually should be excellence in operations, and student-focused and learning. And there's there's more detail that we're refining under each of those that we'll break back to you. But these are the broader strategic themes that'll guide the work over the next five, well, one to three, but refresh after a few.
I like the use of A's, but I struggle with, I know it's not in any order, I get that. But it just kind of jumps out to me that vibrant community partnerships is the second most important thing we're going to do to me. And I struggle with that piece of it.
Okay. So you're you're set on academic achievement being one, obviously?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I guess I, and I guess I would say, is that theme of community partnerships versus just community? Is that, I mean, that is a distinction that we want to make with partnerships with just the community in general. I mean, not just with, is that looking in reference to our families as well as businesses?
It's everything, it's everything, yeah.
I think the partnerships is added to kind of be a catch-all.
Yeah, and and I, good question. I think. We've talked a lot, we can't do what we do here at our partnerships.
Right, but this is business partnerships, this is parent partnerships.
So what I'm hearing is order. If we want to reorder these, we may have to look at.
I don't, you know, there was a lot of discussion around this, you know, I give credit to Jay Newell. He didn't identify, I think he was the one who kind of brought this to light, but it wasn't intended to have a priority.
I understand that, and I I get that, but that's the way it looks to me. I don't know.
And, you know, the vibrant community partnerships, I think when you see the details underneath agents, I think you may climb behind for you. Because there is academic component to partnerships with kids having learning opportunities and experience.
And then a key component that will be embedded into one of the themes, student-focused culture learning, is the portrait of a graduate. And, you know, David, to your point about being aspirational for every one of our graduates, these are kind of our North Star that we want for every student that gets across the finish line for us. And we want them to be ready to look there. We worked pretty hard on that graphic there to get that to a point, so.
You know, I like the graphic. I like the components. And when I see a key academically, you know, not all of our students go on to further education.
Well, I think it could be within the scope of what's, how far they can go. I mean, right, it's like, it's not like we're expecting everyone to be a scholar, you know, it's to their ability. I had a question about the word lead exclusively. What does that mean? I didn't know really what that meant.
Yeah, John helped me with that. We struggled with that, I think.
You know, we've just re-engaged with this over some time. I think this is going to be the core of that meeting.
So so I have two questions on this. One is, how are we going to measure this on graduates? And two is, when they move on to the next level, does anyone care? And whether it's going to military or to college or whatever, just making sure that this match up with, you know, ready to sort these. And are we going to measure that and what engagement?
Well, let me answer your second question first. Yes, will you care? And second of all.
No, it wasn't we, it was where they were going next. And that's what I was trying to make there as a match to. So whether it's going off to college or whatever their next step is. I know this, it was kind of developed internally, but I'm trying to look at it from, as they lead here and move on to that next level, does it match with wherever they're moving on to next? And I think most of the answers are yes, but I'm just trying to figure out, did we ever test that?
I guess I, yeah, I'm struggling on it, and maybe that's my fault. I'm not understanding exactly.
So if this graduate that we've laid out.
Yep.
Goes on to college, does it match anything they need there? Or if they go to the military or whatever, you know, where they're trying to move on to, have we kind of tested? What's on here to say, yep, this all.
Are you saying that these these bullets need to translate across whatever our students are, is that?
To where, yeah, to where they're moving on.
Yeah, regardless of that, okay.
And then measuring it too is one of the pieces.
And that may be the measurement piece, as I said, this will be, this will land in one of the themes. And part of the work on the themes will be to develop measures around that.
Right.
But we're not there yet.
And I'm certain part of it will be extending that measure to be one. It's just something that we've talked about.
Yeah, graduate surveys.
So I think the challenge is going to be how do we measure these? So I think coming up with a measurement and if there's not a way to measure it, should it be on here? That's that's kind of what we're at. Interpersonally, I get it, but I don't know how you're going to measure something like that. So I would, if you can define the the measurement and how you're going to track it, maybe you might have to go back and look at some of these bullets.
So the themes and the goals will have clear metrics and measures. The portrait of the graduate is more of a North Star of what we want our kids to have as part of their toolset as they go off and do art. So that would be more of just kind of a guiding path versus having specific metrics. So that would be more of just kind of a guiding path versus having specific metrics. Metrics are coming out in the goals and the items and they're very detailed, but there's near ones to.
But then how would you ever know if you're meeting the portrait of a graduate?
I, I think it's a fair question. It, it will be built into the figures.
I think the challenge with that is that the portrait of a graduate, I can see being something that's, you know, clearly on our website, something that we, you know, use, we might even send to colleges or the military, you know, like when a student's applying, kind of like that fact sheet. But, you know, nobody in those, you know, what comes after high school is going to care about what our strategic themes are at Sycamore. So I, I think, yeah, I think we need to keep talking about this.
Yeah, and that's a great question. I mean, we always, that's the first question we always ask, of how do we know we're doing a good job with these things? Will we make these things the goals of ours?
We'll, we'll bring that.
We heard that, we'll take that.
Take that back. Take it back.
I, I like the thought that's behind this and every one of the elements I can get behind. For me, when I look at this, not just visually, but just try to remember it, it's just a lot to, it's a lot there to digest. I don't, I don't see it as memorable as the strategic theme or the values or the goals. It's, it's, it, it takes a lot to internalize and reflect back. So, um, for me, there's maybe a little, um, it's a little much. If I can say, if there's a way to simplify the, the concept. I really like the theme of ready to soar. I think that fits in with our aviation, um, athlete. I'm wondering if there's some way to simplify the, the ideas, which I love, into a, um, a simpler palette here. I can get behind this, I just give you my reaction on that. I would never be able to repeat these six on the top of my day unless I studied them.
You know, I think part of the outcome of strategic plan is to have one thing that the community kind of hears over and over. And I think that's going to be landing with the themes and the AEs, marketing piece. I, you know, it would be very difficult to have multiple things that somebody needs, needs to kind of channel in. And I think maybe after, we'll revisit that and that's good feedback. I hear what you're saying, we'll take it to the group. But I think after our next engagement session, it might come all clear.
Yeah, and I, I love the ready to soar concept. I mean, I think that's what we want, um, our, each of our children to be able to fly with the, um, in whatever direction they want to go to David's point.
Great feedback.
Okay, right back. Okay, and then just real quick, we've got, we've got some work to do. We, um, we're going to re-engage the strategic planning team on refining the three-year objectives. In those, within those themes, there's, there's a lot in there. We'll bring those back to you. I think, John, to your point, I think the idea would be we bring them back in chunks as we work through those. And a lot of that will be measurement kinds of things, so you guys are comfortable with it. So we got to kind of work through this a little bit and get it to kind of an overall place where the board's comfortable with it. And ultimately, at the end of the day, prove it. And then, and then get it out of the community.
Catch a question on, so it's on the continual refinement of the three-year objectives. I mean, we have three-year objectives right now, you know, flow down through, you know, U R T S and those goals and objectives and stuff like that that are, you know, linked to the rest of the district. And I didn't quite, I thought I would have seen that today as far as, you know, hey, this is what we're doing now. This is what we're moving towards or we're extending those or whatever. And that was something that I thought was kind of missing, you know, coming back to us now on this, just to say, this is what we've been to the last year, two and a half, two years or so, year and a half, two years. And this is where we think we're going or we're extending that. I don't get the, I don't get the sense that that was part of the dialogue, maybe it was, but.
Yeah, so those three-year objectives are going to touch on objectives we've already had, but also ones that are touching on these other strategic themes. Our next strategic, this is why we're kind of breaking it down with our engagement. Now we're going to have three, we're going to break down of the objectives for those, each of those teams. And then bring that team for engagement, that's when it sees the next thing.
And I would just ask, along with those objectives comes measurement.
Yeah, and, and, you know, when we were reviewing, we even discussed, you know, I could hear all of you.
And I think that, I mean, when the team looked at it, we really, as we started to dig into it, re-engagement, we knew that there needed people, we're done with it before we brought it back to you, so.
Yeah, I will struggle, I will struggle for one for any more approval until there's specific measurements around.
Yeah, and we're not going to ask.
And that was the, that's the point.
That's the point, I'm not going to ask you for that. Great skill. That's the point.
But, and, and I'll say I'm a part of that is, um, you know, the strategic plan, at least most of the ones I've seen, there's a big piece ownership, you know, at the board level of that, not just the approval level. And I feel disconnected, and this is a question I've been asking you for about three, four months, is I feel disconnected from that process. And not necessarily from, hey, being at every call, I'm glad you're there, doing all that, but not seeing any outflows of any of that dialogue, and that's.
Really, we, we've had a hiatus from this process for three months. And, you know, with the level of pandemic, this is a.
But we've gone a long way before the pandemic started too. It just seemed like we were real close and then.
It's, it's, it's not there, yeah. So it's, that's what's coming in the next.
Yeah, so I think to David's point, like, I mean, the board definitely wants to re-engage in this. So as you guys, you know, you've covered those things, yeah.
Yep.
That'd be great.
It's a whole intention.
Great.
So again, we, we've got some work to do and you can kind of see just a, a rough timeline. There may be additional things we need to do to make sure that the board's comfortable, one, with their level of engagement. And also comfortable with the content of it. So we just kind of tentatively map this out. So the initials, the initial next thing would be, um, we'll get the strategic planning team together, really kind of dig into those, um, not dig in, continue to evaluate and assess the three-year objectives, looking at measurement, and then strategize how we want to get those back to the board so you feel deeply engaged, make sure that they're comfortable. So, and then you will see there, measures of success defined, that's important for this board, so we'll make sure we do that.
And, you know, winter 2020, we're going to do.
Yeah.
Just so you're not making sense.
So, and then we're, you know, we're kind of looking forward, once, once the plan starts to move forward, how we, thinking about methods of, again, keeping the board engaged, to make sure you're up to date, to make sure we don't have the details of this yet, or we want to make sure that you are comfortable with the communication, the progress reports back to you periodically. Not sure exactly what that is, but making sure that this is your plan, as you've said, you need to make sure that you're comfortable with the progress you're reporting. We've got some work to do, but we've made some good progress recently and I appreciate your feedback. So feedback on mission, vision, values, certainly get that to us. We've got some feedback on the portrait of a graduate, we'll bring that back to the team if you're ready to go. Exciting, good stuff.
Is the consultant stone ball in the process?
Yep.
Okay.
I have no other.
Oh. Well, Frank, you had a lot, so that's great. Okay, thank you so much. Okay, moving on to the treasurer's agenda, I need a motion for the approval of the agreement with the Greater Cincinnati Foundation.
So, so, and I'll turn this over to Mr. Lewis in a moment, but, um, as we've referenced, as we've engaged and continued to engage community and potential donors in donations to athletic facilities, stadium and so forth, there's an obvious question, if they want to donate money, they need a place to put it. And so we have engaged with the Greater Cincinnati Foundation, which is a really tried and true organization in this community. They know what they're doing. This is just an agreement to allow, once in place, to allow our, our donors who we are very grateful for to actually have a place to deposit their.
Just a couple of additional details, Mrs. Weber sends her regards, but she did do some follow-up and wanted to provide these additional details. Um, obviously this establishes the fund that we need to be able to do private fundraising and allows donors to make charitable contributions primarily for the athletic stadium and the multi-use stadium, and also supporting other projects if there's, you know, that vision and that continuous vision of some of the things we've talked about. Um, a nine-person advisory committee will be put together to review programs for funding. So, um, Mrs. Weber said the board president, the superintendent and treasurer will get together to finalize the membership of the committee, but there will be, be a need for a representative from the board. The annual, the fee is an annual rate of point eight two percent. And that's all I have from.
One question I had was on the distribution side of what we distribute this for. Um, it was tightly wrapped around the athletic complex. Is there any reason, we want to open that up for other things, Frank, since if there's excess proceeds through either a growth in the market or something like that, you kind of succeeded in what the capital improvements were around athletics, but there were needs in other areas that weren't specific to this. This seemed to be tightly written around just athletic structures and what, and didn't give the flexibility to run.
Yeah, David, I, yeah, I don't know that I have a direct answer to that. I see your point. And, you know, referencing, I know the board has an interest in a broader foundation, right? And how does this relate to something like that? I, I guess my only answer is we have to get back to the, I have been deeply involved in that.
And that was related to my question, Mr. Portisop. If we do at some point in the future establish a Sycamore Foundation, would this be able to be closed and those monies funnelled back into our own managed foundation? Or are we tied to this for a certain length of time?
Yeah, I'm not aware of that, I'd have to look at the contract and.
You give a barrel. These funds go into G C F and they actually control it, this fund agreement defines the distribution on, out of that. Like, so that's why it's real important to make sure this is set up with either enough flexibility so you can do that type of stuff. So, or just understand that, you know, that's it. And once all the buildings and athletic stadiums are built, you know, you have to turn that over to G C F to their general fund to do stuff with, so. I think it, I mean, I'd like to understand that a little bit better to see, you would need more flexibility. Follow up, and hopefully won't impact the fundraising side. How? As, yeah, as long as we have the flexibility, both on the distribution and then if we create our own foundation to install and enter in on time, satisfied.
Do you, you got information before you withdraw?
Uh, yeah, considering, so, yeah.
So, because we have had a motion, we have had a first and a second to actually consider it. So if we want to take this, we can do that if Mrs. Weber, Mrs. Munner can get us that information or for us to get us that information. Um, if we need to do this, if we need to have a special meeting to approve this off-cycle, we can do.
Well.
No, I think that we just need to resend the motion.
Yeah, resend.
Okay, coming on, I need a motion for the approval of the consent agenda, which includes.
Personnel.
I'm sorry, personnel.
Yeah, that's all personnel.
Oh, my goodness.
Sorry.
It's only 10 o'clock in the morning. Okay, I need a motion to approve the personnel consent agenda, which includes the ten item items one C, two B, C, D, three H, I, J, and four A.
So moved. Second.
Mrs. Munner, please call the role. Mr. Ballen.
Aye.
Mr. Commerford.
Aye.
Mr. Evans.
Aye.
Mr. Mercurio.
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss.
Aye, motion passes. Moving on to other board of education business, I need a motion to approve professional consultant Janice Collet for the district.
So moved.
Uh, Mrs. Munner, please call the role. Mr. Mercurio.
Aye.
Mr. Evans.
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss.
Aye.
Mr. Ballen.
Aye.
Mr. Commerford.
Aye.
Motion passes. I need a motion to approve the contract for the Ohio Educational Services Center.
So moved.
Maybe a second.
Second.
Mrs. Munner, please call the role. Mr. Evans.
Aye.
Mr. Ballen.
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss.
Aye.
Mr. Commerford.
Aye.
Mr. Mercurio.
Aye.
Motion passes. I need a motion to approve compensation related to $100,000 to be utilized to override one-time bonuses to administrators, classified directors, supervisors, recognition of their work in response to the COVID-19 pandemic.
So moved. Second.
Mrs. Munner, please call the role. Mr. Ballen.
Aye.
Mr. Commerford.
Aye.
Mr. Evans.
Aye.
Mr. Mercurio.
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss.
Aye, motion passes. I need a motion to go into executive session in accordance with O R C 121 dot 22 G1, employment dismissal evaluation, appointment, compensation, and discipline of a public employee, official, or regulated individual, in accordance with O R C 121 dot 22 G3 pending litigation, in accordance with O R C 121 dot 22 G4 negotiation, and in accordance with O R C 121 dot 22 G6, safety and security.
So moved. Second.
Uh, Mrs. Munner, please call the role. Mr. Ballen.
Aye.
Mr. Evans.
Aye.
Mr. Commerford.
Aye.
Mr. Mercurio.
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss.
Aye, motion passes. We may have a vote after executive session, we can come back into public session to actually take that vote. Um, let's take a five, 10 minute break. If that is feasible.
All right.